What I see playing out is uninsured people avoiding COVID-related care.
Dr. Adam Gaffney is an ICU doctor and assistant professor at Harvard Medical School. He worries people who get sick will choose not to get tested. Then they won't know if they have COVID and could unknowingly spread the virus. And there's another issue.
In 2022, we have several important therapies that, when given early, can prevent the development of severe COVID pneumonia. Paxlovid, monoclonal antibodies.
The oral antiviral Paxlovid has been shown to cut the risk of hospitalization or death by as much as 89% for high-risk patients. But to get one of these treatments, you need a positive COVID test and a prescription. Gaffney says uninsured and underinsured people may avoid getting tested for fear of a steep bill, and that will cut them off from life-saving therapies.
We're beginning to treat COVID more like any other illness. Care being rationed by ability to pay, and that's the exact opposite of what we should be doing.
Even when federal dollars made sure anyone could get tested or treated for free, disparities were glaring. One CDC study showed racial minorities were far less likely to receive monoclonal antibody treatments. And during the Omicron surge, many states saw extreme shortages of those antibodies.
Centering equity is most important when there are not enough supplies for everyone.
That's Dr. Douglas White, the Chair of Ethics in Critical Care Medicine at the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center.
The problem right now is that many states have sort of ignored the need to focus on fairness and instead essentially put in place mechanisms that make it a first-come, first-served process.
The White House says the federal funding cuts mean COVID treatments could run out as early as May. Public health experts warn disparities will only get worse as supplies dry up. And most places aren't even tracking who gets the millions of doses already purchased by the federal government. Health officials in states like Indiana, Ohio, and Illinois have steered supplies to major hospital systems and commercial pharmacies. But they say they're not asking them to collect demographic information about who receives the treatments. And that concerns Dr. Giselle Corby, Director of the Center for Health Equity Research at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill.
The reality is that these data are critically important. Health inequalities disappear when we stop collecting data on race and other social identities. But the impact does remain.
She says we need data to figure out what the barriers are for people who need COVID treatments. Dr. William Trick of Cook County Health in Chicago agrees. He worries some people don't even know these treatments exist.
The problem isn't just one of distribution. It's how do you get the people to come, to know to take the medication, and come to the right clinical setting to get the medication?
Federal COVID programs aim to address barriers like these with varying degrees of success. George Washington University Health Policy Professor Jeffrey Levy says Congress's move to slash funding now is part of a pattern. The U.S. often pumps money into public health during an emergency, then scales back once the crisis feels over.
I think what we're seeing now is, for the first time, Congress actually cutting back in the middle of an emergency, which is even worse.
Levy says the boom and bust funding pattern makes it nearly impossible to sustain improvements in health equity. And it's the nation's most vulnerable who suffer. For Here and Now, I'm Farah Yousri. Side Effects Public Media is a Midwest reporting collaboration focused on public health. Elsewhere on today's show, why the Grammy Awards rarely recognize hip hop and rap for the Top Album of the Year award. We talk with culture writer Justin Tinsley, who says the contentious relationship between hip-hop artists and the Grammys goes back decades. He tells us why he thinks artists like Rihanna, Jay-Z, and Kendrick Lamar aren't getting awards even as they're achieving huge cultural and commercial success. You can listen to that conversation at hereandnow.org.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Peter O'Dowd in Phoenix.
And I'm Celeste Headley in Washington, D.C. It's Here and Now. Funding for Here and Now comes from WBUR Boston and from Indeed, a hiring platform committed to helping businesses of all sizes. Businesses can invite candidates to apply, then schedule and conduct interviews all in one place. More at indeed.com/NPR.
This week on This American Life, in the movies, it's so simple. A superhero swoops in, saves the day. Grateful citizens applaud. In real life, though, it's a little more complicated.
Why would somebody do this? Why?
There's gotta be a catch somewhere.
There's gotta be catch, right? Yeah. I didn't truly believe it was happening, even in the moment that it was happening.
Everyday Avengers and their motivations this week.
Monday evenings at eight and Saturday afternoons at three on Radio IQ. Support for Radio IQ comes from Skip Slocum and Associates with Nest Realty. Skip Slocum and Peg Warren, providing real estate services to Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and the greater New River Valley. Skip at nestrealty.com. And Bell Electric of Blacksburg. Class A electrical contracting since 1981. Residential service and commercial construction. Electric vehicle chargers, backup generators, and more. Bellelectric.com.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WBTU Charlottesville.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council, our regular session, is hereby called to order. And I will ask our Clerk, Ms. Susan McCoy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And according to the President. We're pleased and honored to, this afternoon, to have with us Reverend Preston Tyler, pastor of Hill Street Baptist Church. And he will be giving us our invocation. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Tyler.
Let us pray. God, my Father, we come to you once again, first saying thank you, Lord. We thank you for your grace, your mercy. We thank you for all that you have done in our life. Now, Lord, we ask a special blessing upon this legislation right now. That, Lord, that you touch each and every one that is here, each and every councilman, our mayor, all our leaders, Lord, that they may lead us to a higher level in this city. Lord, we just say have your way right now. And if you have your way, we know that everything will be all right. Thank you for what you have done. And, Lord, we bless your name for what you're about to do. For it's in the awesome, able, abiding, avenging, availing, and all right, God, we pray this prayer. And let us all say amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. And let me say good afternoon to everybody. Welcome to our session today on City Council. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanookva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. Announcements. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and the upcoming expiration of terms of office. Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals. One vacancy, and we want that to be an architect. The Roanoke Ops Commission, one vacancy. Roanoke Public Library Board, two vacancies. The Virginia Western Community College Local Advisory Board, one vacancy. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, one vacancy. And you can access the city's homepage to apply for any and all of the vacancies that I just mentioned. And let me say, this council encouraged those citizens to step forward to help us govern our city on a board and commission. So it's easy to apply. Just go online, or you can call our clerk. And they will direct you as to how the process works and help you fill out an application. But we look forward to, and we encourage all of our citizens to come forward, step forward, and avail themselves on a board or commission. We got a number of them in our city, and we have some vacancies. So we look forward to you applying. On April 18th, beginning at 10:30 AM, Roanoke City Council will conduct four interviews to select two candidates to serve as Roanoke City School Board trustees for three-year terms of office, each commencing July 1st, 2022. The four candidates for school board now, I don't get this crossed up, school board. The four candidates are Mary F. Appel, Ryan A. Bell, Kathy S. Cohen, and Joyce Watkins. And on April 18th at 7:00 PM, a public hearing will be held to hear the views of citizens on said candidates for Roanoke City School Board trustee. An announcement of the successful candidates will be made on May the 2nd at 2:00 PM's council meeting. That's school board. Now, let me just give you the information on City Council. Council will interview six candidates for consideration to fill the nine-month term of office of former council member Robert L. Jeffrey Jr., ending December 31st, 2022. The candidates are Suzanne Osborne, Kaysha Preston, Anita Price, Luke Pretty, Kevin Berry, and Regron Vetrashan Moore. Regron Moore. Those six citizens will be interviewed this afternoon at 3:00 here in the council chamber. All right. We'll now move down to presentations and acknowledgements. April 2022 is Fair Housing Month. And I want to ask Anton Callaway, is he here?
He's not here, but we have a representative.
Where's?
I said, Mr. Callaway is not here, but we have a representative here.
Okay. All right. Peter?
Yeah.
I recognize that mask on, okay. If you join me at the dais.
I'm pleased to recognize you, Allison.
Good to you, man.
Good to see you, man.
A little proclamation from the mayor's office. And we're very appreciative of the service that you all give to our city. And got a proclamation for you.
All right.
Whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and the Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. Whereas this April, the 11th, 2022, will mark the 54th anniversary of the signing of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 by President London B. Johnson. Whereas the City of Roanoke, in conjunction with the Fair Housing Board, has provided a fair housing program for its residents. And today, the local community supports fair housing laws. Whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of dwellings and other housing-related transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, and disability. And whereas to the prohibitions of the National Fair Housing Act, the state of Virginia includes elderliness, source of funds, sexual orientation, gender identity, military status, and the City of Roanoke includes age and marital status. And whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in the City of Roanoke that can and should be achieved. And all citizens are encouraged to abide by the letter and spirit of the fair housing law. Now, therefore, I sherman and peely, Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 throughout this great, seven-time All-American City as Fair Housing Month. And I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Walson, who was accepting this for the board, and ask him if he wanted to have a few words.
Sure. I'll just real quick. I just want to, as Chair of the Fair Housing Board, I want to thank City Council and the mayor for proclaiming this as Fair Housing Month. We, as a board, are always working to make sure that citizens are able to purchase and rent homes without discrimination and continue to educate folks all around the city about this issue. So thank you again for your proclamation today. And we look forward to continued work on behalf of the city.
I will now down to item three, which is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City Council sets this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And, Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens signed up?
No, sir. We do not have citizens at this time.
All right. All right, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. I want to call to your attention a walk-on request from my office to convene in a closed meeting immediately following the recessed meeting of council on April 18th, 2022, beginning at 10:30 AM, to discuss the selection of a candidate to fill the term of office of former council member Robert L. Jeffrey Jr., ending December 31st, 2022, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. All right, I need the motion on the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the Consent Agenda is approved as amended. Thank you. All right, we now move down to our regular agenda. And that is five, item number five on the regular agenda. It's public hearings, we have none this afternoon. Petitions and communications, there are none. And item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. Item number A, 7A1, which is an item needed, recommended for action, is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Grant Program funding to support the activities of the Regional Hazardous Materials Team. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph, please?
A resolution accepting the Virginia Department of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Grant Hazard Materials to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Emergency Management for hazardous materials, emergency responses, and training and development, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Item 7A2 is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Grant Program funding to support the activities of the Regional Technical Rescue Team. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution accepting the Virginia Department of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Program Grant Funding Technical Rescue to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance appropriating funding from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Emergency Management for equipment and supplies for the Regional Technical Rescue Team, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. And the budget ordinance passes. Item number 7A3 is the acceptance of the Summer Food Program Grant from the Virginia Department of Education. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Summer Food Program Grant from the Virginia Department of Education and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Seeing or hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government through the Virginia Department of Education for the Summer Food Program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions among council discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, 7A4 is the acceptance of the Southwest Virginia Regional Employment Coalition Grant from the Virginia Department of Social Services to provide technical assistance to citizens receiving temporary assistance by two needed families benefits, TANF benefits. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of an employment advancement for temporary assistance to needy families participants grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Social Services, authorizing the City of Roanoke to serve as the primary fiscal agent for the distribution of such funds to the provider agencies for service provided to the local departments of social services in Roanoke City, Roanoke County, Franklin County, Bodatot County, and Craig County, and authorizing execution of any and all necessary documents to comply with the terms and conditions of the grant.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government through the Commonwealth of Virginia of Virginia Department of Social Services for the Southwest Virginia Regional Employment Coalition Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item 7A5 is the execution of an agreement with Roanoke County Department of Parks and Recreation for continuation of therapeutic recreation services with four annual renewals. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Roanoke County for the continuation of therapeutic recreation services upon certain terms and conditions.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. At this time, I'm pleased to receive our city manager with any comments that he may have.
And I have no comments this afternoon, so thank you.
Okay. All right, item number eight, then, is reports of committees, none. Number nine is unfinished business, none. Number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, none. And item number 11 is motion and miscellaneous business, inquiries or comments by the mayor and/or members of city council. So are there any inquiries or comments that anybody? Mr. Best Pitch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment that I will be submitting a request to the city manager under our policy on naming of facilities to name the room at the back of the Virginia Room, which is where all the old family records and so forth are kept, as the George Kegley Archives Collection. We had a resolution not too long ago memorializing Mr. Kegley after he passed away, and I think everybody that knows him or knows anything about him knows that preserving those types of historical documents was very important to him. And when you go back there, the door has glass panels on each side, and then a solid glass panel right across the top, and I think that would be a perfect place to put the lettering and from now on to refer to that area of the Virginia Room as the George Kegley Archives Collection.
All right, thank you, well said. Any, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let our residents know that we are still seeking applicants for the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, so if you are interested in volunteering on one of the five subcommittees that we have, please contact a clerk or myself or even Mr. Best Pitch would be happy to take that information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with Mr. Best Pitch on his request for the naming of the room at the library for George Kegley. I would also ask if the resolution memorializing Mr. Kegley maybe could be brought at the same time, and that way we could just do both at that time, because we have not adopted the resolution as of yet, memorializing Mr. Kegley.
I thought we had done that.
No, sir. I think the clerk's office was still working with his family.
I apologize.
Yes.
All right, any other comments? All right, item B is 11B, is vacancies on certain authority boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. We have none at this session, and we got a certification of our closed meeting, and I'll ask the vice mayor to offer the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move with respect to any closed meeting, just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by members of council in attendance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, thank you. All right, at 3:00 today, Roanoke City Council will conduct public interviews with the applicants to fill the nine-month term of officer, officer former councilmember Robert L. Jeffrey Jr., ending December 31st, 2022. The remaining two-year term of office commencing January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2024, will be filled by a special election on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. So, and I probably got a little bit ahead of myself, but we've had, we're explaining the interview process, which is determined in closed session. We'll have interviews with those applicants, those that were selected, commencing at 3:00 p.m. today. Is there anything? Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, is there anything else that needs to be?
No, sir.
Okay, well, at this time, council will stand in recess as we prepare for our interview with the city council candidates. Thank you.